I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to Monday, June 6, 2022, Board of Alderman meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Any discussion? Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's start with outside the rail, Farmers Food Center ARPA request. All right, would you mind coming over here, stating your name and just walk around that outside if you don't mind? Thank you. Right over to the podium over there. Thank you very much.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. My name's Heidi Lynch. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Vermont Farmers Food Center. I've been with the organization for the past eight years, and I was appointed as Executive Director earlier this year. And we're here to speak to the letter that we submitted requesting ARPA funds from the city to help us get the Farmers Hall facility reopened for November 1st when the farmers market moves back inside for the winter. So the reason we're here making this request is because we have a unique timing challenge. And what that is, is that we have, since we discovered the air quality contamination issue that closed down the building, we've been working with the Department of Environmental Conservation, the Planning Commission, and the engineers that are helping us develop a solution. And we have all the information we need to proceed with, excuse me, an air mitigation system. And we are part of the state's Brella program, which provides funding for this type of environmental cleanup. But in order to go to Brella, you have a one-time application opportunity. And we are being advised that we should go when we have all the studies and information to address all the contamination issues on the property. So in order for that to happen, the deadline would be well past the November 1st deadline to get the farmers market and all the other food vendors back in there. So hence our timing challenge. So if we were able to bridge that gap in timing, we would get the funding to implement the system, reopen the building, apply to Brella when we have the rest of the information available to us, and then address the rest of the contamination on the campus. So that's why we think it's a unique opportunity to work with the city because we, as the residents and, you know, area businesses that have been affected are the most impacted by this timing challenge. So that's where we're here today, and I'm joined by some of the board members from the Vermont Farmers Market to speak to their constituency as well. But that's the gist of our challenge and why we're proposing this request. Thanks.
Thank you. The letter is in your packet. Anybody have any questions?
I'll move to refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
We have a motion to refer to Finance Committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that Finance Committee meeting will be warned at some point, and then if you guys want to attend that, Matt will coordinate with you. Thank you very much. Okay, still in outside the rail, companions and wholeness donation request. This is also in your packet. Is there anyone to speak to this? Okay, so there's a letter in your packet for companions and wholeness. It's a donation request for feeding some of the needy under the Rutland United Methodist Church.
No one is here to...
So I can't really speak to the request, although I have had a couple of conversations with two principals over there that's involved with the program. Their numbers, and I think they reflect that, no matter. Their numbers have increased exponentially in the last, especially, three, four months. And they don't have enough volunteers. They're having trouble raising enough money to, you know, to buy the food to give out, and they are, obviously, there's need. But as far as the best specific request, I don't have the information.
Okay.
I'd be willing to make a motion to refer to Finance, and maybe somebody from the organization can come speak to there.
Okay, we have a motion to refer to Finance. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Are we still up outside the rail?
Yes, hold on one second. We're just, any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Come on up.
Jack Crowther, 24 Tuttle Meadow Drive. Chrissy Torrey spoke to me before the meeting, which kind of mostly answered my question about when the fresh look at fluoridation was going to happen. The request was made in November by mutual agreement. It was agreed to wait until the new board of Alderman was seated before we took it up. I understand Chris has a lot on his plate, so I'm not rushing. But at the same time, I'd like to get this process going and complete it and make a decision about whether the city is to continue fluoridating its water supply. So I've told Chris that I'd rather see it done sooner rather than later. I brought a letter just reiterating some of the recent research on neurotoxicity of fluoride, and I've got copies for each Alderman, as well as a couple of suggestions on how the process of reexamining fluoridation might work. Just my input. So that's all I have to say. And there's one for Jim Rontondo, too, that maybe could be given to Henry. Oh, okay.
I believe this has already been referred. Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Thanks, Jack. And as I spoke to Jack earlier, this is all on me. I've had a lot of things with work and my health happen over the past six weeks. So I'm going to try to get this done for July, hopefully. Plan it out. I think it's important, as Jack said, to give it the look, right? Bring in people, and let's do it again with, you know, different opinions. It feels like some things have changed in the community since we looked at this a few years back. So I really, I do want to do it's due justice, and so I apologize for the delay and its taking.
Understood. I've had kidney stones myself, so I know what they do to you.
Great. Thank you very much, Jack. We are still in outside the rails. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from outside the rail this evening? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. Communications from the mayor.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. I just had a couple of things tonight. One is on the agenda in your packet, and that is a nomination for a vacancy that has occurred on the Rutland City Police Commission. I'm putting forth the name of Elise Hedlam. As most of you know, Elise is a longtime city resident, very active in city affairs, and in particular, Project Vision, big supporter of the Rutland Police Department and the city as a whole. And I believe will make a truly wonderful police commissioner. So with that said, I would ask that you table a nomination until your next regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to table nomination. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Second, I wanted to remind everyone that a week from this Wednesday, which is the 15th of the month of June, at 6:30 over in the auditorium at the Rutland Intermediate School, Project Vision, the Police Department, and myself will be hosting a public meeting regarding the homeless program down at the hotels. And the one, two in particular, that we're going to zoom in on, although there are homeless folks, the program is in other hotels around the area. But we want to concentrate on the two problem areas, and those are the quality in here in the city and the Cortina in Rutland town. So I just want to remind people at home, this is a public meeting. You're more than welcome to come. As a matter of fact, I'm encouraging people to come because I think this is an opportunity to have a discussion with the state, to have the state hear clearly what our concerns are, not just from city governments, but from the neighbors and the public as a whole. We do have a moderator. We're going to hopefully allow people to have their say that night, and hopefully we can get our message across about what a concern that is that we're having down here for a lot of different reasons. As I do every month, I did have a meeting with a small contingent of folks this last Friday up here in my office. There was a representative from the Department of Economic Services, as well as the Executive Director of Lit. And there is actually a representative from the Methodist Church who came and attended the meeting. And she, you know, talked a little bit about the program that she's involved with and the number of people that are coming to the church right down the street here to access their breakfast and lunch program, and a lot of them are from the hotel. So again, that's just straining the services that we are providing here in the city. So anyway, didn't learn a lot new. Folks aren't the decision makers. I think it's more important than ever to hear from, hopefully, the Commissioner, Sean Brown, from Montpelier will be down, and he'll be able to answer some of the questions that we're all asking. So I look forward to that. That's what I have written up on the agenda. I know over the last weekend, we've had quite a discussion here in the city about a proposed gun shop, gun sales, et cetera, over on Temple Street. And I've tried to communicate with people as fast as I could once I learned that the proposal has been withdrawn, that it's no longer an issue over in that area. So I think we've said about as much as we can. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Andrew is here from the zoning administration and our zoning administrator, and I can certainly, you know, I found out about this on Friday. We reacted to it quickly. We seem to have come to a good conclusion, so.
Alderman Davis.
So probably more for Andrew, if I may?
Yep.
So Andrew, with home occupation, the rules and regulations are there about the impact on the neighborhood, the traffic that can or cannot occur. But we really don't define home occupation as far as you can have a beauty shop or you can be a seamstress or you can do this. Will you be tackling that in the zoning?
So I had a chance to speak with Matt and outside council regarding this. And it's, when it comes to firearm regulation, there does seem to be a lot of, not a lot of leeway for a municipality to have, to implement certain regulations and ordinances over firearms. It seems to be limited based on what the state kind of gives the municipalities to do. I guess it would be worthwhile to explore what the municipality can do with firearms and the proximity of schools and other establishments, you know, and just to provide some clarity with the home occupation business. It really is something where, whatever the product being sold or service being provided, I kind of have to have blinders on when I'm reviewing the application in relation to the regulations. And the way the home occupation permit regulations read is it's more of an impact to the surrounding area, such as traffic and how many people are coming and going to the site and how much goods they're providing to be sold. So that's kind of how this got as far as it did. You know, there really wasn't any latitude for me to, just because it was a firearm, you know, just look the other way. So, but yeah, I think it's a worthwhile discussion to see what the municipality can do as it relates to firearms in the city. And I think that would take a coordinated effort with Matt and probably the outside council as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Mayor, anything else?
Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda. We're removing the second executive session related to negotiation of a contract. We are adding a report of Standing Committee from Finance. And actually, if there's no objections, I'd like to remove the Standing, move the Standing Committee reports up in the agenda before reports and letters from department heads and officials. Is that okay? Alderman Neary?
One more edit. There's one charter and ordinance and one parking, not two parking committees.
Great, thank you. All right, noted. So that being said, Alderman Whitcomb, can you go ahead with your Finance Committee report?
Alderman Torrey.
Alderman Torrey.
Do we need to make a motion to that effect?
To change the agenda?
To add and delete.
Oh, I don't know. Do we need to? I don't think it's to be approved. All right, all those in favor of making those changes to the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, Alderman Whitcomb, review your night.
So you should have a copy of the Finance Committee report on your desk, everyone. The Finance Committee met on May 17, 2022. The topic was Wonderfeet Kids Museum. Members present were Alderman Davis, Alderman Torrey, Savage, Talbot, and Whitcomb. Others present were Danielle Monroe, Dean Pierce, and Paul Gallo. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The meeting opened with Danielle reviewing Wonderfeet Kids Museum's development plan, including a move to a new location within Rutland City. Danielle provided detail regarding the attractions they intend to include, partnership with local stakeholders, and discussed the increased traffic they anticipate bringing to Rutland City. Danielle explained that the majority of the construction would begin toward the end of summer of 2022, with an anticipated completion date of early 2023. Alderman Savage inquired as to why the request from the city had increased to $150,000 compared to the original $100,000. Danielle explained that in planning process, it became apparent that the total project cost was going to exceed the initial projections. Alderman Torrey noted that he had previously served on Wonderfeet Board. He noted that there is no current conflict of interest. Alderman Torrey spoke to how the museum both helped with economic development as well as early childhood development. Danielle noted that she viewed Wonderfeet as an engine for families to make connections in Rutland, especially new families to the area. Alderman Davis noted that she had concerns related to $50,000 increase. She indicated she would support $100,000. Paul Gallo discussed with the committee the way in which Wonderfeet helps provide preventative care to young children and ultimately aids in their development. Paul cited that investment in early childhood development allows for cost savings to the school system in the long run. Alderman Davis reiterated her concern with the increased amount, saying that there were many other requests before the city that need to still be considered. In addition to childhood development, Paul cited the positive economic impact he believed that would result from this project. Alderman Talbot expressed his support for the project, citing the plan as a good use of ARPA funding. Alderman Talbot moved to recommend to the full board the approval of $150,000 for the Wonderfeet Kids Museum from the fund formerly known as ARPA. The motion passed four to one, and I so move.
We have a motion.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments? Alderman DePoy.
So I don't know if this is for the chair or maybe for Paul, but I'm just, I'm curious as to why the increase. And is it related to the current economic times with the severe inflation going on out there, especially in the building materials, that sort of thing? I mean, what's going on to request the extra $50,000?
Well, first of all...
Would you mind coming up just so that the TV, that would be great. Thank you. Thanks.
Danielle Monroe, Executive Director. So a couple of things drove the increase in the overall budget from $500,000 that we originally projected to $600,000 that we're projecting now. One of those things certainly is the increase in building material costs from when we first started budgeting this project last summer. The other part is that as we got into designing in the new space, we added additional exhibits to fill out the space, including an exhibit that specifically reflects Rutland City's history, which is a miniature version of the Main Street Park gazebo with an exhibit highlighting the Rutland City band history. So we included that in the overall cost, and that was what drove our request from $100,000 that we originally projected to $150,000.
Okay. Any more discussion, questions? Alderman Davis.
Not discussion, really. Again, I had the opportunity and the pleasure to meet with these folks at Wonderfeet. And the request initially at the time was $100,000, which I supported and still do. I did also have the conversation, I believe, that we had $4.4 million and $7.3 million worth of requests. And I think I made that pretty clear. So I think that was my concern when another $50,000 was requested. I think it's wonderful to do the gazebo and do the history, but I also know, I also have a responsibility on this side to look at the projects that are still pending, some that will directly affect the taxpayers' pocket, and try to hold on to some money for them. So that is my only reason for voting no on the additional $50,000. I think it's certainly a benefit to the city and a benefit to the families and the families that visit here. It's truly mathematics.
Alderman Torrey.
Thank you. So as I said, I am no longer on the Wonderfeet Board, but I was involved for a long time. The $150,000 that came to us really formally, the $100,000, I think, was more of the kind of informal conversations that we were having. And I think a number of us had, saw the potential in the new facility and thought there was an opportunity that we could really invest more in it. And I think between the amount that we've given to the hub and, you know, potentially of $400,000 as a match and the money that we've given to the paramount of about $450,000, it feels like $150,000 to kind of make this really in a solid, you know, downtown that's going to really draw people in. I think it's a worthwhile use of the money. One of my measures has been since, what we used to talk about with ZMAIS, is that if this was the last $50,000, would you give it to this project? And if this is the last $50,000 of ARPA money, this is absolutely the project we should give it to because it hits on a number of different fronts. It hits on economic development in terms of drawing people down from Killington. It hits on our children and our early childhood ed and helping our kids grow up into, you know, good members of society. And moreover, it helps develop a community. One of the things that we've found over the years was how families would start to learn and meet each other and know each other. Danielle has a program, It Takes a Village, and it's really about building community. It is one of the few places in replacement of some of the clubs that used to exist where families can create community. So it is absolutely a worthwhile use of the $50,000. Perhaps they should have more, but I think they would probably settle on $150,000. So thank you.
Alderman Whitcomb.
Just real quickly, President Dungus, sort of to the point of what Alderman Torrey is speaking to. I think one of the reasons I find it easy to invest in Wonderfeet is they're bringing forth a proof of concept. They've done this. They've been successful. They've sort of demonstrated that there is this extensive halo reach in which people will come from a certain distance to come into Rutland City. You know, with the expansion, you would hope that that number would then create, kind of increase exponentially, that it would drive more traffic in the city. They would come here, visit Wonderfeet, spend money in other local businesses. I think they have one of the better business models that we've seen and have had come before us.
Alderman Tatiya.
I just also want to note the savings that are provided for the school system in the long run because investing in our children now means that taxpayers aren't having to invest later on. So I think it's really a wise use of our money.
Any, Alderman DePoy?
I just have one last question. So given that we're going to be talking a little bit later about the parking deck and the pass-through and everything, what is the pass-through to access from the parking deck for where you guys are? And is there any proposal?
In our current location or in the new? In the new location.
Is there anything to get people from the parking deck straight in to your facility or close to?
So they won't be able to access directly into Wonderfeet. They would either use the West Street Tower exit or come through the Asa Blumer Building exit and onto Merchants Row that way.
So that's where some traffic does come through the Asa Blumer, and you're not that far?
Correct.
Kind of a similar walk-through to the Center Street?
Exactly. It's a pretty similar distance to our pass-through to the parking deck in our current location, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to say, reiterate my support for the request. You know, we did have a discussion initially. You came and saw me and talked, we talked about the $100,000 or about whatever it was going to be. And I understand the thought process behind the increase. I guess what I would just say in my support is that in your discussions with the owners of the building, which is Green Mountain Power, is that correct? That you are working on a deal with them, that maybe they could be made aware that the city is stepping up and doing this, you know, extra support. And maybe a little bit more support can come from them, too. I don't think that that would hurt. I think that would help the whole situation and put a lot of people at ease. So, thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One, no? All the rest ayes. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Feel free to move your front. Okay, moving on. Alderman Neary, your pick, parking or charter and ordinance?
We'll do parking first. The Rutland City Parking Committee met on June 1st. Members present were Chair Neary, Alderman Dungus, and I may have missed somebody else, but I don't believe there is anyone else there. Others present, Mayor Lair, Alderman Davis, Gordon Trishillo, Camden Thompson, Alderman Gillum, Officer Rosario, Erica Belestra, Attorney Blumer, Alderman Tatiya, Ken Putnam, Andy Paluch, and Alderman DePoy. Chair Neary called the meeting to order at 5:33 PM. The first item on the agenda was the parking garage, including the passageway to Center Street. This was a follow-up meeting to the April 27 meeting with an expanded scope of the entire first floor of the parking garage. Erica Belestra, owner of the passageway to Center Street, provided some information regarding the issues around the passageway. Belestra stated that conditions had worsened in the passageway, including substantial damage to property, which led to the shutdown. Those conditions had improved since the shutdown, which was echoed by adjoining property and business owner Andy Paluch. Camden Thompson from Vermont Buildings and General Services provided some information from the state perspective, including what the current contract with the city allows and disallows. Attorney Blumer suggested that Officer Rosario and Asa Blumer Building Security could partner to make routine rounds of the first-floor transit area and add security cameras of the area with monitors at the Blumer Building Security Desk. Thompson informed the committee that it may be possible and would follow up with his superiors on the idea. Contract negotiations between the state and city will continue with some changes expected. Chair Neary asked Thompson about facilities plans and if there were any scheduled. Thompson was not aware of any schedule but would look into it and follow up. It was suggested that an in-person safety audit be conducted of the area to develop a plan of action. Mayor Lair agreed to meet with BGS personnel during this site inspection. The passageway will remain closed indefinitely until enhanced security measures are installed. There are no motions made out by the committee, and the meeting minutes are presented for informational purposes only. Meeting adjourned at 6:17 PM.
Awesome. Any questions for Alderman Neary? Moving on.
All right. The Rutland City Charter and Ordinance Committee met on June 2nd. Members present, Chair Neary, Alderman Tatiya, Alderman Franco. Others present, Alderman Dungus, Attorney Blumer, Chief Kilkellin, Alderman Talbot, and zoning administrator Sturinski. Chair Neary called the meeting to order at 5:33 PM. The first item on the agenda was implementation planning for the new shopping car ordinance. This was a follow-up to the parking, oh, that's a carryover, sorry. This was a planned follow-up meeting to the April 7 meeting. Attorney Blumer began the meeting by reviewing the documents that were sent to Rutland City businesses that will be impacted by the updated ordinance. The documents included a cover letter explaining the attachments, the Effective Cart Nuisance Abatement Program Plan template, and a copy of the updated ordinance. The committee then reviewed the timeline of implementation with letters sent on May 27th, effective date of May 31st, committee meeting on June 2nd, applications due and review beginning July 2nd, and a hard deadline of August 2nd. The committee also reviewed the procedure and discussed which city entity may be able to complete the task. The procedure task list includes review plans, additional outreach, develop standard operating procedures, plan approval, feedback, confirmation, develop a tagging system, develop tracking system, determine website feasibility, active versus passive enforcement, abandon cart tracking, notification and follow-up, fine issuance, adjudication, and a six-month follow-up. The committee determined that building and zoning may be the most appropriate department to house the database and provide routine cart patrol with a new code enforcement officer. Committee also asked if other entities like the Downtown Patrol Officer and Downtown Partnership could assist with identification and outreach. Chief Kilkellin agreed that Officer Rosario had been addressing the issue and would continue to assist wherever appropriate. The committee also discussed the potential to use technology to reduce the administrative demand on the city. GovPilot offers solutions such as Citizen Request/Complaint Module. This could be linked to a database to allow citizen reporting of abandoned shopping carts. This could be linked to a database to allow citizen reporting of abandoned shopping carts, reducing the demand on zoning department. The committee also discussed the potential for a simple Google form survey linked to the city website that could be linked directly to the zoning office. Overall, the committee determined that would be best to start with a simple approach, evaluate the administrative demand, and make changes based on that demand. The committee agreed that the demand would likely be higher to start and taper down over time, and that overall, the abandoned shopping cart issue has seen some improvement in recent months. Moving forward, the committee determined the issue no longer needed to stay in committee, and that the mayor should determine which city departments should be involved in the procedure task list. The committee voted unanimously on a motion to direct the mayor to assign the task list to the appropriate city departments. And I so move.
Second.
Your motion's been seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Meeting adjourned at 6:14.
Thank you very much. Alderman Neary. Okay. We're done with reports of standing committees. Moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Building and zoning administrator Andrew Sternsky, disposition of city-owned property, pages 1 through 7 in your packet.
So, I'll start with 202 Columbian Ave. I believe there's some more materials that we want to get to the board before moving forward. I'll defer to Attorney Blumer with maybe an overview about those.
Yeah, I can give a quick background. So, the executive session that we removed tonight was also in relation to the sale of 200 and 202 Columbian to the Housing Trust. And Andrew's committee, the city-owned property committee, had a meeting last week that he was going to report out on. And technically, I think the board could take action on this tonight without the materials that I was going to provide for the executive session, but I made the mistake today, my mind was a little bit elsewhere, and I let Mary Cohen know that she wouldn't be needed tonight for my part, but I forgot that there was another part for Andrew. So, I just wouldn't want to have this come up and her not have an opportunity to, you know, answer questions or provide additional information. So, I was just hoping that the board would table both the memorandum for 202 Columbian and the memorandum, that's an update as to their proposed project for 200 Columbian Avenue, until the next meeting, and then I'll have the materials ready for the negotiation of the option agreement that they're looking for as well. So I think it would be better to do them all together, and then that way, Mary will be here too to answer any questions that anyone has.
Okay. Did you want to add anything, Andrew?
Not at this time unless the board has questions for it.
So, do we need to table those? Some of?
Yeah, you can either remove it, we can put it back on, or a table would be, would keep a book.
I'll table.
Motion to table's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Awesome. Moving on to the next item, Andrew, non-tax revenue review, pages?
We still have 33 Summer Street.
Sorry?
There is two.
There's two in the same disposition. I apologize. Continue.
Yep. 33 Summer Street, as you see in the memorandum, we're unable to reach an agreement with the previous selected bidder, which was Randy Bishop. So, last week, we convened the city-owned properties committee on Tuesday, May 31st. So, basically, in order to get where we got, we went to the next highest bidder, which was Y&amp;R One Opportunity Fund, I believe is their name? Yep. And so, Matt did a good job coordinating with them and seeing if they were willing up their offer to what Randy originally bid, which was around 62, or was $62,363.88. So the bank came up, which makes it a little bit easier going forward. So, the city-owned properties committee had discussed it and voted unanimously to award the property to Y&amp;R I Opportunity Fund with me, Richard. Any questions?
Alderman Torrey.
I have a question. I was waiting for a motion. I'm not going to motion that.
I move to suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So I'll move the motion, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to authorize the sale of 33 Summer Street to Y&amp;R I Opportunity Fund for the purchase price of $62,363.88 per to section 6.2 of the Rutland City Charter, and to further authorize the mayor to sign all purchase and sales-related documents.
Second.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Torrey.
Thank you. So, when I saw this, I looked, I think I was looking at trying to find the minutes from the city-owned properties meeting, and then when it said the Summer Street, or the Spruce Street property, was that what it was?
Summer.
No, no, the one that the others own, South Street. I went back and looked at your minutes. I was not on this board during the time where it was approved to give South Street to this organization, this group. And then somewhere, one of those minutes, I saw that it's, this is, I mean, as it says, "A fund of a bank." Am I correct in that?
I believe so. Matt, maybe you have a better idea of how they're set up?
I, not only through, I guess, I only know through you telling me that they were related to the banks that had the note, but I don't know what the relation is or how they treat this entity. I guess they're calling it Y&amp;R Opportunity Fund. They have a property management company that came through and did the walkthrough recently. I think it's River Valley. But I don't know much about the entity or how they're, and I don't know which bank they're related to either. I don't know if you remember that, Andrew, or?
No, and it's entirely possible that someone told me, you know, they represent the bank, and I just glommed onto that, but at the very least, you know.
So, if I can continue. So, when this started, one of the things that we wanted to do, the city-owned properties process, one of the things that was, we wanted to do was make sure that the properties that we came into control of went back into the community, into the neighborhoods, in a way that we wanted to see them. We made opportunities for the RRA to either take a property and develop it the way they saw fit, or go out to bid. In those, some of those early studies of 2013 and 2015, or 2019, part of the problem was property owners who did not live in town. And I understand that you have some, that the committee had some advice from the city attorney of, that you must take the highest bid over anything else. I think that there is no way we should be authorizing one of the properties that we have to a bank that is not a person or not a local person, and it doesn't have to be local, but that they are a person versus an entity that we can't, you know, that we have to go through a property management company. I don't want us to put ourselves in the same situation that we were in a few years ago, where we had neighborhoods that were decaying because of absentee property owners. They don't have to be a bank to be an absentee property owner, of course, but it seems wrong for us to do this. And so I think we should, if the process needs to be that we only give it, we only sell these properties to people who live in with 50 miles or 100 miles or whatever that is, I can't, I cannot in good conscience authorize a sale to an opportunity fund when we don't really know who they are or what they're about.
Okay. Alderman Davis.
I just have a question to Alderman Torrey's point. So, it says other notes also owns a 100 South Street in Rutland. Have they owned that for a period of time? Is it a recent purchase? And what is this, what's the condition of that property under this entity?
To my, well, first, I'm not quite sure how long they've owned it. I could look at Access GIS. But my, when we were screening the applicants for, you know, this past round of city-owned properties, no one had submitted any applications where they were deficient in COs or, to our knowledge, any building violations or zoning violations. And I believe all of them had no delinquent taxes or fees, so.
So, Andrew, do you know if they rehab and sell, or do they hang on to these properties for an unknown period of time?
Based on the information that I know, I imagine that they keep and maintain because they do engage with River Valley Property Management Services. So, I guess my logical inference would be that they do keep the properties on hand and do maintain them. Based on the information they put it, they submit it in their original application, they were looking to have an anticipated investment of $75,000 into the property on top of $62,000, which was their purchase price.
Thank you.
Alderman Talbot.
So, I agree with Alderman Torrey's sentiment, but having sat on the city-owned properties committee, this was, we, this bid was significantly higher than the other two bids we received for this property, if I recall correctly. And, you know, like you just mentioned, they're willing to put a significant investment into it. I'd rather have it be a local property owner, but I, I think it's important to see that these rental units stay online at a time right now when nobody can find rental properties.
Alderman Davis.
This one is to city attorney. So, to the point that we have to take the highest bidder, what if, what if we refuse this offer? I mean, we refuse the offer based on the fact that it's not a local landlord, someone who's going to occupy the house.
Maybe better for executive session, but I think, I think your, some of your options may be to remarket the property. I mean, the problem would be if you remarket the property and you get less than what this offer was, you know, then the former taxpayer has, has a, you know, maybe a potential argument that the city should have taken the previous offer, and maybe it's the city who has to add, you know, kick in the amount to get to the $62,000 to make up the difference between whatever the new offer is that it prefers. If you're, if we're underneath what's owed in taxes, then there's quite a bit of leeway because then it's really just you all making a decision on behalf of the city as to, you know, you may forego $5,000 or $10,000, but the project may be more valuable in your eyes to the city from either a tax perspective or just for the neighborhood or the community. But when we are above what's owed to the taxpayer, it really is the best practice to take the highest bid or be prepared to somehow try to make that former taxpayer whole if you, if you were to take a lower bid.
Thank you.
Andrew.
So, and just for the board's reference, the other two bids back in, when was it, March, were $40,000 with a $100,000 investment and $25,000 with a $20,000 investment. So, in totality, with Y&amp;R coming up with their $75,000 investment, that's around, is that, around $140-ish, so.
Okay. Any further? Alderman Whitcomb.
Just to comment more than anything, President Dungus, Alderman Torrey's point really does resonate with me, but I do think that based on how we've written the criteria, while this may not meet the original spirit of what we were trying to do with city-owned properties, it does meet all the criteria. It does come in above the taxes owed. We do have fiduciary responsibility to the previous owner, as hard as that might be for people to hear, to get them as much back as we can. And perhaps going forward, it may be worth looking at, is there any tweak adjustment we want to make to try to encourage this remain-local investment by who will be ultimately a family living in the home?
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? All right.
Thanks. So, totally hear what you're saying, and, you know, I agree, but I cannot in good conscience agree to vote to sell a property to an entity that's perhaps not even a person. So, I will ask for a roll call. So I'm on record. Thank you.
Roll call, vote. Any other discussion before we vote? All right. Ready?
Yeah, this is the sale of 36 Summer, correct?
That's correct. Alderman Torrey.
No.
Alderman Savage.
Yes.
I thought I called the roll. I thought I called the roll.
Go ahead and call the roll. I don't know.
Makes it a little easier on me.
Go right ahead.
We have a no. Alderman Franco is absent. Alderman Savage, you are a yes. Alderman Neary?
Yes.
Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Alderman Tattio?
Yes.
Alderman Whitcomb?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum is absent. Alderman DePoy?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, one, two absent. Motion passes.
Motion passes, seven to one. Thank you very much. Ready? Good, thank you. All right, so moving on, non-tax revenue review.
So, over the last few weeks, maybe a couple of months, Mary and I have been just discussing non-tax revenue and the fee schedule. I'm going to use, you know, the building and zoning department for context in regards to examples, just since I'm the most familiar with that. So, I think the city should maybe review their, their fee schedule, the non-tax revenue, because at least with my department, I think we're missing out on potential opportunities to raise more revenue. For zoning permits alone, we process probably around 115 a year, and the only fee that's charged is a $15 recording fee, so that fee actually is transmitted to the clerk's office. So, more or less, there's no fee in regards to the time that I spend on zoning permit applications. The building department is hammered with certificate of occupancy visits. They do, it seems like they are going to average about 2,000 permits a year just in certificates of occupancy. We charge no fee for them, so it's pretty much running around the city and, you know, getting nothing in return. Oftentimes, people will cancel on us onsite, a little bit beforehand, so we're going out there multiple times, and it's more or less wasted time. Other times, they will tell our office coordinator that they have upgraded everything they needed to in the past certificates of occupancy, and they go there and there has been nothing done to the property. So, you know, I think we have an opportunity here to perhaps either have a small, you know, processing fee of $5, $10 for these certificates of occupancy, and that alone can raise, you know, a decent amount of money depending on how many they're doing in a year. And then, you know, if we have a penalty fee for if they're telling us one thing and we go out there and it's not done, you know, maybe it's a $25 fee, or, you know, maybe, maybe even larger. So, those are kind of the issues that, you know, our department would like to look at. We charge nothing for paper, and we do get a lot of requests for copies of listers cards and the like. So, tying this kind of to my next proposal, I think this could be a potential opportunity to offset some costs and generate more, and, you know, that's just in the building and zoning department. I know there's probably a lot of opportunities elsewhere within the city that we can potentially look at and get more money, and, sure, Mary could attest to some of that too.
Alderman Talbot.
So, I'll make a motion to refer review of the city's non-tax revenue sources and fee schedule to the finance committee.
Why not?
I would just think it could also be charter and ordinance because the fees, the certificate of occupancy lie within an ordinance as well, so it doesn't really matter.
We're pretty busy.
I think there's like, aren't there like four charter and ordinance meetings coming up?
I don't know, yeah. There's a lot, there's a lot in finance, too.
In a discussion?
It doesn't matter. I mean, it's one, one half or the other half.
In a discussion with Mary, you know, we understood the workload of all the committees, and given the broad scope of this request, one of the other logical places we were thinking was maybe the general committee, so I don't know what the board thinks about that.
So currently, we have a motion to refer to finance. There's no second.
Second.
No second? Motion? Okay. We have a?
Oh, I'm a brother.
Motion to refer to finance, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion about the referral? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's going to finance. There you go. Sorry. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the list, Administrator Sternsky, permitting software, RFP, pages nine and 10 in your packet. Software, RFP, pages nine and 10 in your packet.
So as you may recall from the previous budget season, I was allocating approximately $9,000 for a new permitting software program and doing countless hours of research. I had landed on one that I thought would be good. I did a lot of discussion with them. We were hoping to do our certificates of occupancy within this software, and given that I didn't know how much money I could potentially have, and since we weren't really contracted with them yet, we could only go so far down the rabbit hole before we really started looking at implementation. Having a discussion with them, it doesn't, as we were getting closer to the fiscal year and knowing what I had, it doesn't look like it's really practical to do the certificates of occupancy. There would be a huge efficiency lapse when we really started exploring it. With that in mind, I asked them what would the next couple tiers look like, and they had given me approximately $20,000 to $25,000 for that tier. Given the increase, if the board does allow me to go out to an RFP with an increased amount, it does open up the idea to reach out to other software permitting companies, one which I am sure everyone has heard come from my mouth is GovPilot. This is a, could potentially be a citywide permitting and government software system. For $25,000, or a little bit less, maybe $22,000, you could potentially get permitting software, and as Devin mentioned in his report today, you could get a report, a report of concern module, which would allow us to track the shopping carts very easily, as well as, you know, do other types of concerns in the community. So one of the things, having served on the Chair Committee, the ADA-related issues could be pointed out using the same software. If, you know, sidewalks damaged, potholes in the street, all of this could be tagged easily in the same module that we would theoretically use for the shopping carts. So with that, I would respectfully ask if I could go out for an RFP for $25,000, and it would allow me to explore other permitting software companies in the event that, you know, I would ask for the original amount of $9,000.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Neary.
Sorry. Motion to authorize Building and Zoning to solicit requests for proposals for permitting software not to exceed $25,000, with the understanding that the full amount may not be awarded.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Davis.
What was in the initial, what was the dollar amount in the initial budget that was requested for the software?
It was $9,000. Yep.
And where do we anticipate the difference may come from?
So it's possible with, you know, if we can arrive at a fee schedule, you know, I think that could help offset some of the costs. What is good about these software permitting programs is you can put the fee upfront. So if they're looking to schedule a certificate of occupancy, they pay a $5 fee upfront before they even get to scheduling. So that's a potential place. We're lagging a little bit behind in terms of getting our code enforcement officer, so there's potential savings there within our budget that we could account for the difference.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any questions? Discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Good luck with your RFP. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Attorney Bluer, Referral, HR Committee, Fire Officer Personnel Policies and Pay Scale, pages 11 and 12 in your packet. Attorney Bluer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did provide a somewhat detailed memorandum, just asking for a referral to the HR Committee to review some revisions to the Fire Officer Personnel Policies that we're suggesting, as well as an approval of the Fire Officer Pay Scale going forward. Ideally, we could schedule that meeting next week, and that way the board could potentially approve whatever comes out of committee prior to July 1st, which is particularly relevant to the pay scale. Some of the pay scale changes take place around that time with the new fiscal year. The personnel policies are not, doesn't really matter when those go into effect, but sooner is better than later, just so people have clarification as to what changes are being made. So really just looking for a referral tonight, but happy to answer any questions about what these personnel policies are. Tried to give a little bit of the history of how we ended up with separate personnel policies for the fire officers.
Okay.
Chairman.
Alderman Davis.
I'll move to refer the topic of revision, the Fire Officer Personnel Policies, approval of the Fire Officer Pay Scale to the Human Resource Committee.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, great. Next item on the agenda, Attorney Bluer's Settlement and Release Request, pages 13 and 14.
Thank you. So this is a minor incident that occurred where a contractor, not employed by the city, but a contractor for an outside outfit, caused some damage to Route 7, and so the insurance company, their insurance company is responsible for the damage, and they've agreed that damage occurred. I think they may have been willing to mill and repave the area, but because that area is scheduled to be completely redone in 2025, Commissioner Rotondo felt that it was, it made more sense to patch the damage for now and to accept a $5,000 settlement instead of having them do the work or pay to do the mill and repave work. So I have attached the release that they've asked us to sign. It's a standard release, and after speaking with the department, both the Commissioner and the Business Manager, I don't have any concerns about the city releasing its claims in exchange for the $5,000 settlement. So if that's what the board would like to do, I've provided the language for a motion.
Alderman Neary.
Where is this, on Route 7?
That's a good question. I probably have it in my email, but I don't know offhand.
That's just curious.
Yeah. 178 North Main. Oh, okay, thank you, Mike. Yeah, it's on the release itself. Which looks to be across from Rotary Park.
Okay. I haven't noticed it, so can't be that bad.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what caused it either, but some sort of piece of equipment or accident.
Sure. Thanks.
I will make a motion to authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to enter into the release of all claims in favor of Main Street America Insurance in substantially the form presented.
We need a motion to suspend the rules first.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Okay. We have a motion to suspend the rules has been seconded, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion passes. You want to do that again?
Now I will make a motion to authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to enter into the release of all claims in favor of Main Street America Insurance in substantially the form presented.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion, questions, or comments for the City Attorney? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, and now moving, we'll move the executive sessions to the end of the meeting. We've done reports of standing committees. We have no reports of select committees. Reports of Representatives, Alderman Neary, Traffic Committee Referral.
We've talked about this before, but we're back here again. So at the May 20th Traffic Safety Committee meeting, it was yet brought to our attention again that there are issues with parking on the Green Belt. As of right now, the city is spending tens of thousands of dollars to add concrete curbing to sort of prohibit the parking on the Green Belt. And so we voted unanimously by the Traffic Committee after several complaints from residents to make a referral to charter an ordinance, an ordinance referencing a parking ban on the Green Belt within the city right away.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion's been seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Alderman Natori.
I had another rep report.
Okay, fantastic. That'd be great.
I had a planning commission, City Planning Commission. I told you I'm going to try to keep you updated as they go through the zoning process, and maybe I should write something up, but generally, they include the minutes in the piece, so you can see the specifics. I just want to let you know that I've been attending planning commission meetings for a number of years, and just when we went through all the sign ordinances and everything else. And I want, I think this group, the mayor has appointed, is a really good group with different perspectives. It's really some engaging conversation, and I think that they are representing us well in balancing, you know, that interest in improving our quality of life, but also in making sure that development can happen in a easy way, making it so that we can try to reduce costs on the potential developers. They're looking to put as much as possible in, you know, they have permitted and conditional use, and what has to be reviewed. The board is really, the commission is really trying to put as much as possible into permitted, so more things could just kind of sail through as long as they meet our minimum requirements that we're discussing. So I just wanted to give you the update that I felt like it's a really good group that's balancing the pieces of quality of life, but really trying to make sure that development costs are kept down by, you know, not making people jump through unnecessary hoops, you know, trying to reduce what goes to DRB, or what gets reviewed by the zoning administrator, you know, administrative review, and really trying to see how can we streamline the permit process. So I just want to kind of give you that update, and I'll try to do that, you know, monthly as we go on. This last piece, we actually discussed that piece in terms of permitting conditional use, and I forget what's on the agenda for next time, but there was something.
Site plan review.
The site plan review, actually discussing what would be in site plan review. So, you know, the draft that was presented kind of brought us down a path, but this group, I think partly because they needed to kind of get back on board, you know, there are three new members that the mayor appointed back in March, they're taking another step back. But again, I really want to say I think it's a really diverse perspectives, and I think it's going to be really good for the city as it comes through. I'll try to keep you updated, but take a look for the minutes as Barbara puts them in there.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Natori. Any questions for Alderman Natori? Okay, fantastic. Reports of Representatives, any others? Okay, moving on. Petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communication. We have a special events permit request, coin drop for the Humane Society for both June 18th and July 30th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. on Merchants Row, and this is pages 14 through 20 in your packet.
Motion to suspend the rules.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? None? Go ahead.
And motion to approve the Rutland County Humane Society coin drop on June 18th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., also on July 30th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the location designated on Merchants Row.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the SEP request for June 18th and July 30th for the Humane Society, and it's been seconded. Any discussion or questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good. All right, moving on to Board of Control Commissioners. We have a second-class liquor request from Quasium, I hope I'm saying that right, Enterprise LLC, pages 21 through 25.
Do a motion to go into the Board of Control Commissioners.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for this. Can I get a motion to go into the Board of Control Commissioners?
I moved it.
Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you for the guidance. Okay, second-class liquor request, Quasium Enterprises LLC, pages 21 through 25 in your packet.
I'll move to circulate for signature.
Motion to circulate for signature, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good. And we also have a first-class liquor request for American Dream Restaurants LLC, pages 26 through 30 in your packet.
I'll also move to circulate for signature.
Motion to circulate for signature. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll move to go out of the Board of Control.
Okay, we have a motion to exit Control Commissioners, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are now out of the Board of Control Commissioners. Moving on to unfinished business. Alderman Neary, update on Park Mobile RFP. Been a lot of talking tonight.
Yep, so as you probably all remember, we made a motion a couple of meetings ago to go out for RFP for Park Mobile. Our purchasing managers here at Magro did some research based on other communities in Vermont. None of them went to RFP. That's not really the process for this type of service. So instead, what we did, based on other communities' experience, we joined a sort of group purchasing national group, NCPA, which gives us preferential pricing, 5% reduction in the fee from Park Mobile. So I would like to update that motion to allow the City Attorney and purchasing manager to enter into a contract through the NCPA program with Park Mobile.
Okay, so we have a motion to update the original. Okay, it's been seconded. Any questions, discussion?
Yeah, I just lost track a little bit. Is there like a term sheet that you guys had looked at in committee, so you have a sense of like what the pricing is? So that, because I'm more comfortable, obviously, if you decided it's a, you know, you're good with the deal, and then it's more me working out the legal, you know, the boilerplate type language.
Yeah, we had already approved it from a sort of committee discussion, and now it's even a better deal, so.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Yeah, and Sarah can fill you in on the details.
And just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just procedurally, because it didn't go back to a discussion and the motion has changed, do we need to suspend the rules, or are we just moving the motion?
That's a good question. I think because, I think you would suspend the rules if the board, I mean, the board could refer the topic back to the committee, but given that it's come out of committee and a recommendation was made, I think you would suspend the rules, and if you want to take it up tonight.
Sure.
You can pass it.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes, and then.
Motion to direct the City Attorney and purchasing manager to enter into contract through NCPA with Park Mobile.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Motion has been seconded. Any discussion? Any further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Alderman Neary. Okay, moving on. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Davis.
So if I may, I think I would like to see if we could get a report from the treasurer in regards to where we are with the ARPA funds to date. What funds have been requested and are set aside, what that dollar amount is, so the total of requests to date, and then we have a list, maybe the list of requests that are pending, plus the two, I don't know if they're ARPA funds or not, but I guess I'm assuming the two that are received tonight, because I think we need to figure out where we are with some of the projects within the city, and I think this board has to determine at some point, do we continue to accept and fund outside requests, or do we say at this point, this money needs to be spent within city government? So if Mary could at some point, there's no hurry to get us that information, I think it would be beneficial for us all, because they're all worthy projects, but at some point, we have to step back and say, I mean, there's an end. We knew that we had $4.4 million, but we knew that there were almost $8 million worth of requests. So at some point, we have to figure that out at the end. I am not dissatisfied with any of the requests that we've done to date. I think they will pay the city back. They're, I like the hub, I like the paramount, because it's going to return tangible items to the city, whether it be jobs, whether it's reruns of meals, et cetera, et cetera. But I do think we have to seriously take a look, and it's hard to say no, but sometimes to say no, but sometimes we have to say no. And, and I think if we just get that information, then we will know where we are. We may have a lot more money and say yes to everybody. I don't, you know, but I think we have to take a look at it.
Alderman DePoy, and then Alderman Neary.
Well, just to piggyback on the, you know, we're doing the gazebo in the park restructuring, and of course, that's something that would have to be done if we wanted to keep our gazebo and keep the band playing there in the summertime, because right now, they can't even use the gazebo. So, and that is city-owned, and that's a city, you know, it's city infrastructure, which I think is a very good use of the money. We also have Jim Rotundo down the hall here that's, that's asking for not just the 4.4, but even more than that in requests. And that's city infrastructure that is going to be borne by the taxpayers. I mean, because that's stuff that has to be done at some point. I mean, we can kick the can down the road until pipes are breaking, or sewers are leaking, or, or, you know, whatever else needs to be done over at the, at the wastewater treatment center, or at our water treatment center. And that's stuff that, the money's either going to come from ARPA, or the money's going to come from the taxpayer. And I know if you ask John Q. Taxpayer, where do you want the money to come from, he or she is going to say, please use the ARPA money and don't tax me more for this infrastructure, which is, has to be done. And, you know, I voted in favor of the wonder fee, and I voted in favor of, you know, of the Paramount and stuff, but I think Alderman Davis is right. We really got to watch where the money's going, or else these things that are coming to us from department heads, that's going to be taxpayer money, 1,000%. So, I, I think we really got to put the brakes on the outside, you know, organizations that are asking for the money. I mean, and God knows, I wish we could give it to them all, and if more money comes in at some point, then God love them, we'll give it to them. But let's focus on infrastructure from now on, please.
Alderman Neary.
Yeah, I think Sharon and Tom bring up a good point. And, you know, our approach initially had been this sort of like comprehensive analytical, bigger picture approach. And I think we've been sort of stuck in the weeds on individual projects and lost the larger perspective. And again, just like they said, I completely agree with all the projects we've approved. However, you know, being at that person that wanted to see the matrix utilized, I would like to make a motion to refer to Suri Finance Committee, another comprehensive look at all the projects instead of just a singular project approving and rubber stamping. Let's get back to redeveloping the matrix, looking at the second half of the money, and determining what our priorities are, if they're infrastructure, if they're outside requests, and have a plan, so that if we do get outside requests, we can rank that in our priority. So.
Okay. So, we have a motion to refer?
Second.
We have a second. Alderman Torrey.
Thanks. So, to the, the points that have been made, I 100% agree with Alderman Neary that there needs to be a discussion, and finance committee seems to be where it's at these days, of the use of the ARPA money. As you know, when you all started and I was sitting behind the rail, I was advocating that we had a, that we should have a strategic approach of, is it 30% infrastructure, 30% economic development, or whatever those numbers were. And that conversation never happened. And so, we're, we're left with trying to say, is this a good project or not? Sure, it's a great project, but how much of these great projects can we do if we don't have that overarching structure on, on the money? It's better to do it late than never, and so I'm absolutely in favor of Alderman Neary's motion. And the question of whether or not we, we stop outside versus inside, or if we just put a halt on it, one of my thoughts is just put a halt on it for a year, and let's see what happens then. Let's have a conversation then. So, I think having the discussion in finance committee is really worthwhile.
Alderman Davis.
The only thing I, I'm cautious about is the things that we have approved by this board, that it's going to be, you can't undo when they've already moved some projects forward. They've used this money as funding toward other funding mechanisms, you know, to review it, to see where we are. I think reviewing it to see where we are, reviewing it to see what the impact is. Because, bring us back to the original discussion, we said we wanted to see projects that paid themselves back, so to speak, that we saw impact to the city, whether it be rooms and meals, whether it be jobs, you know, whether it be infrastructure, whether it be this kind of thing. And we've gotten a little bit away from that. And I think feel-good money is good money. Don't misunderstand me, but I think, you know, I, I spoke to it this evening, you know, it's not that you don't support an issue. It's just at some point, you have to say, I'll give you this, but I can't give you all of that. It's not that the money's not well spent. There's only so much money. And that's, that's the issue of debate.
Any further discussions or comments, questions? All right, hearing none. We have a motion to refer to finance committee. And a progress report from Mary, it will include as part of that. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. More work for you.
It's a busy committee.
Okay, miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. We are still there. Any more new business, motions, resolutions? Alderman Torrey.
Less of the new business and more just kind of a notion. Alderman Gillum and I sit on the board for Rutland's Promise, the family homeless shelter, our first family homeless shelter in Rutland. We are having a fundraiser this weekend on Saturday. It's a mini golf tournament. Tickets are $25, but it obviously goes to a good cause. You can buy them directly from me, or Alderman Gillum, or if you show up at either 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock at the mini golf course in Mendon, we'll be doing our fundraiser there.
Great. Thank you very much.
Big shout out to Alderman Gillum. I hope he's feeling better, and I hope he can hear me.
He texted us that he couldn't hear the voice.
Okay.
I'm speaking into the microphone, Mr. President.
Any more miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. No, we got a arms-length motion.
Let me earn my, earn my money here.
Thank you. Go for it.
Motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding probable litigation to which the city would be a party would clearly place the city at substantial disadvantage because the discussion will develop the city's strategy in such probable litigation, and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and then motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the city attorney, zoning administrator, treasurer, and mayor, and clerk to discuss probable litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313a1e, and Title I, Section 313a1f.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?